Here is, is a part of it. So it's, to break it down very simply, there's the Facilities Committee, the Communication Committee, and then the Board as a whole. The Facilities Committee, which, similar to the Communication, Board members, community members, administrators, teachers, they meet every other Tuesday to analyze and discuss every project under consideration. They meet right across the hall in the CES gym. All those meetings are open. The Communication Committee at the same time is working to gather input from the community, which will then be used to inform which projects are ultimately chosen. At, in the, I would say, December-January period, we'll get closer to the Facilities Committee making a recommendation to the larger Board as to which projects would be included in the Capital Project, and then the Board will vote sometime in the, I'd say, January-February window, and then the community will actually vote in May. Now, I mentioned that the Communication Committee, there would be, you know, public input. So what does that actually mean? How would the public participate? So there was a community survey that was mailed to all district residents over the last few weeks. Many of you, I'm sure, got it. If you didn't, we actually have an electronic version, so if you would still like to fill that out, you can give me your email address tonight. Anybody that's working the door, you can give your email address to. We'll get you one of those electronic surveys. There's also public forums, like the one that you're obviously attending now. You can attend or view the Facilities Committee meetings, again, every other Tuesday, right across the hall. You can also visit the website, cornwollschools.com. It's the main district website, and then just click on the Capital Project tab, sign up for email updates, and we will keep you informed that way. You can also follow our Cornwall, Cornwall Board of Education page, Facebook page, excuse me. Alright, so, this is where I want to narrow the focus of the discussion just a little bit, because, you know, there are a lot of things that we could address in this Capital Project, and I want to be clear that we are, we have a lot of needs and very little wants that can be considered. So the needs, buildings, think roof repairs, mitigating water infiltration, replacing exterior doors, windows, HVAC, boilers, things that have reached their usable life, in some cases have exceeded it, and are in need of imminent repair, plumbing, site work, things like that. The site work is an interesting point. There's, you'll notice the bus loop. We will explore a, one example of that in a second with the middle school. Even within these needs, there are some options as to how we address them, and we'd like to put some of those options forth as discussion. Same thing with the athletic facilities. There are different ways that we can, we can address that, and that's part of why we come to the public for input, to see, you know, what comments, questions, et cetera, ideas you might have. Now, about the athletic fields, I know this has been a hot point of discussion. There are basically two options. One would be to move the athletic facilities to the high school. So that would be a synthetic turf, multi-use field, football, soccer, lacrosse, plus a track. It would include bleachers, press box, and refurbished tennis courts. The middle school, similar idea, but you'll notice on the bottom there, we would also need to add parking and locker rooms in order to make that make sense. As anybody knows who has been to a high school football game, we don't really have much parking there, and that would, that's an issue that would have to be remedied, which would add, on top of the field cost, also the locker rooms. Currently, we have athletes that don't really have a place to go when they come to the middle school, have to use the middle school facilities while that school is still in session, which is clearly not ideal, so those would have to be built as well. And then there's the, the bus loop, the middle school bus loop. Two options, you could widen the bus, the current bus loop. Two benefits there, you would allow more buses and cars to enter at once. You would also, by having it wider, you would allow those buses to park at a more efficient angle. So think about, you see buses that park at like 45-degree angles, it gives them, you can just pack more of them in there. With the current setup of the bus loop, you can't do that, it's not wide enough. So this would cut down on some of the backup. The other option is to go straight at the problem of cars and buses mingling by just creating a separate entrance for cars only to the parking lot. So buses and cars would not actually be competing for the same space. Then you would create a cars-only drop-off site within the parking lot, so there would be like a mini loop, and you would enter and exit out of that same egress onto Main Street. Alright, so that's not, you know, there's certainly a lot of detail that we can't go over in one slideshow, but I think those are, that's a good recap of some of the general things that have been discussed in the last few weeks. So, the question is, alright, well, what are we looking for tonight? We want to catch everybody up to speed, as I just attempted to do. We want to gather your input, certainly answer questions, hear what's important to you. You may find yourself using phrases like, "These are the areas of the district I think need the most attention." "What is the Capital Reserve Fund?" "I have a question about the athletic facilities." We want to hand this over to you to really get, you know, your informed feedback, so that even if it's just a question, and we can inform you about the process, we would like to do that. If anybody has, you know, creative suggestions or anything like that, we are also open to those as well. And, one last thought, just before we get it started. I just, I know that we're, since we're at the beginning of this process, I feel obligated to just share this one, this one piece of advice. Nobody in this room or in this whole district is going to get everything they want in this project. It's just not how these things work. You know, there's always going to be a line item that maybe you're not as enthusiastic about in the end, or there's one that you really wanted to see in there that didn't quite make the cut. I would just implore people to realize that this is about addressing as many needs as we can within this one project, but that does not mean the, the needs that are not on there are being ignored. We would still have plans for addressing some of these, you know, some of the needs that are, that don't make the cut in other ways, and we will be exploring those in the next few months. Okay, so, I'll stop there. Peter will be ready to pass the microphone to anybody who wants. I would just say, show of hands, you know, it's always tough to be the first one to go, but, alright, we have our first volunteer. Yes, if you can, if you can start by saying your name, thank you.
Sure. Dave Goldfarb. A few questions. I'm glad you planned ahead for this. I really appreciate that and put money away. Is this going, this bond issue going to take care of all the structural needs for years to come, or are we going to be revisiting this again two years, three years? Is this going to be a said, you know, and done project?
So there's not enough funding in our current allocation that we've designated for the current bond, so, as Brendan explained, with $5 million in savings, we can afford approximately $20 million in addressing needs for the district without an impact on school taxes. So, that's what we're going to do first, take care of as many as we can with the $20 million, and then think long-range again. Do we save more money to be able to do this again in another couple of years, or, or five years down the road? That's to be determined by, by the Board.
Thank you. Also, if that's the case, you know, and this was a big discussion point a few years ago, was the AstroTurf and the expense of buying that and maintaining that, would that money be better spent on the structural issues that we really need to address now and look at that at a later date? I also thought I understood there was going to be probably a separate meeting about a stadium for this school. Am I wrong about that? Is that being proposed?
I, I think you might be referring to the Facilities Committee meetings that are also, there was one meeting yesterday, the athletic fields were part of that discussion. Just to be clear, though, there's nothing, there is no, nothing has been decided on one way or another, so this is part of a, you asked about the athletic fields.
Right, right.
We're at the process of feeling out all of these options.
Okay, I would just think that that should all be discussed together. Again, I'd hate to see money, and again, sports are important, but I hate to see money taken away from the structural and the repairs that really need to be done, the things that can wait for a later date that are more, you know, less necessary.
To your previous point about discussing it all, all of it together, because there are so many, so many people and interested, you know, parties and opinions to express, for the Facilities Committee, we tend to divide them by topic, just because it is a long process. We'll be having these discussions for the next couple of months, so while that was the primary topic at that one meeting, we will certainly be getting to all of the other topics in ensuing meetings.
Thank you again.
Hi, everybody. I'm Hugh Liebert. Thanks for that presentation, Brendan, and all the information is really helpful. I just had a follow-up on Mr. Goldfarb's question to Mr. Dave. The, if $20 million isn't the total amount of needs, do we have a sense of the scope of what the needs would cost to fix? Related to that, you mentioned the 2020 Building Condition Survey. A quick overview of what that found and what needs were identified in that would be really helpful, I think, in evaluating this. Thanks.
So the total scope is, is really difficult to quantify right now. To your second question, we'll probably answer the, the first question. In the Building Condition Survey, and it's on the website, if you go to Departments, Buildings and Grounds, you'll find the entire Building Condition Survey. It is a very long list of needs in the district. One of the first steps that we took when looking at the Building Condition Survey to think about what we could actually handle in this bond, we immediately started to narrow down that scope. So all I can say is, what we have on the table right now with the Facilities Committee is looking like around $35 to $36 million in need, and the Facilities Committee needs to narrow that down to the $20 million target, just to give a sense of needs outweighing the funds that we have currently. It does include the fields, yes.
If I could just add to something, I'm sorry, managing microphones. The, I started to make the, the point at the, the end of my talk there. We have set forth a goal as a Board that, for those projects that perhaps don't make the cut, we at least identify a path to funding them. Maybe not next year, but over the course of the next period of time, I'll just say five, 10 years, you know. So that, we are, I, I would prefer to look at this as the bond is one big tool that we are going to use, prospectively, to address a lot of needs, but it's not the whole ballgame. You know, we'll, we'll explore other avenues, and there might be, there might be a project that there's, you know, a hypothetical path to getting aid aside from the bond, and that looks attractive as an option B. That may be the reason why it's kept off. There may be something that we say, "Well, perhaps we can do this internally," you know, in-house over the next five years, and that's the reason that it's kept off. So we want to, in the end, have a plan for everything, and certainly, the bond will cover a lot of those, but I don't want you to think that just because something isn't included, it's forgotten.
Thank you, Nancy Bryan. I just want to remind everybody that the, the architect firm that we have hired, Tetra Tech, and their areas, and their expertise, and their people that they have that are working on certain things, they are still doing some final evaluation and prioritizing for the Facilities Committee, for the Board, for the community. So we will know shortly which needs are, and it's been evolving, because they have a few more things that they have to finalize as far as roof, looking at roofs and looking at certain things. So we will know which is a number-one priority, which is two, which can wait, and as Brendan said, there will be some things that we can do in-house. And the other thing we need to, we always remind the community is that the district has taken very good care within its budget of the facilities, but these are big, big, big items that are going to need this type of funding, and so we are very grateful to the community for allowing us to be able to save the $5 million over the course of the last few years.
My name's Tom Keen. I just have a question, Harvey. Is there any plans to separate the bond into two parts?
That's a decision that the Board will have to make.
So if the bond is separated into two parts, whatever money you allocated from the reserve for that part of the bond, and say that part gets voted down, you would not be able to use that money, correct?
You could. You would be allowed to.
You'd be able to then put it towards the other bond that passed?
You can put it toward another, what I would call another initiative that wasn't part of--
So a future bond that could be used for?
Uh, yes. It could be the next year.
But it couldn't be used for the part that passed?
It, it would be used for the past, yes.
I'm sorry?
So let me, so let's suppose we, we have the athletic field and everything else. The $5 million could either be designated specifically for the, one or the other, or split, okay? Typically, it's split, okay? Now, if something doesn't pass, what happens to that piece of that reserve that you didn't therefore then need, okay? Or really looking at the point of, we are going to use the whole $5 million, and what happens to the, to the balance of the entire allowable amount that we can do? So let's suppose that total allowable amount is $5 million because something didn't pass, one of them didn't pass. The Board can then move forward and take that $5 million and initiate another capital project, still at no cost to the taxpayer, okay?
Correct, but it would be a new project.
It would be a new project.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be able to be used for the part that passed.
Correct.
So, so if you, technically, you would lose out on the state aid on that too, correct?
No, no, because when you actually do finally do that next piece--
But you would do that in a future bond, you would get the state aid, but you wouldn't get it today?
Not on that piece. Right.
So we'd be leaving money on the table?
Uh, in a sense, you would, yeah. I mean, the bottom line is that our aid ratio is about, it's 77.4 percent. That's the exact percentage. So let's just say for argument's sake, it's 75 percent for easy numbers. Every dollar we spent, the state's picking up, you know, 75 cents. It's, it's, it's a really good situation.
No, I, I understand that we want to get that state money. That's the whole point.
Right.
So, I don't see any advantage to separating the bond. Oh yeah, why would, why would we do that? Why would we separate it? Because we run the risk of losing out on that state aid.
That's what we're looking for, the, the comments tonight, so--
Right.
Again, that's the Board, the Facilities Committee making recommendations to the Board, and the Board ultimately voting on that. So if your opinion is that we should not separate it, that's, that's what we're here tonight to hear.
Well, yeah, I want to make sure that that was the fact before, you know, I said that, but, yeah, obviously, it stated the facts. That is my opinion.
Hi, John Hines. I've got three questions. Four out of five of our schools are rated unsatisfactory from the Building Condition surveys, right? After this Capital Project, hoping it passes, do we know how many of those, after, I know we're not doing a new Building Condition Survey right now, but would that upgrade them to the satisfactory level, or would they still be labeled unsatisfactory from the survey?
It would depend. We still haven't identified the scope, so we don't know what the Board is going to pick and choose from, so I can't answer that question right now.
Okay. At the September 20th Board of Ed meeting, the Board approved putting $2.9 million of unappropriated fund balance in the Capital Reserve, which filled it, right? To the $5 million level?
Yes.
Okay. In July, when discussing the federal funding that came in from the federal government, it was shared that about $1.3 million would be coming to cover the current cost of nine AIS teachers, to free up that $1.3 million to move into the Capital Reserve. So, was that $1.3 million already moved into the Reserve, or do we have another $1.3 million coming in future?
That $1.3 was not necessary to move into the Capital Reserve. The hopes is that one of two things. We're going to either set up a new Capital Reserve, and if we don't, we now have that amount of money that we, that $1.3 will actually create a surplus, as originally intended, and that will be used for other items, which we've identified on the worksheets that we've talked about. The biggest one being the air conditioning situation at the middle school.
Awesome. So we still have $1.3 floating out there that hasn't been put away yet?
Correct. That is not part of the Reserve, right.
Awesome. And my last thing is, I've been coming to the meetings and following along, but I don't have the documents that the Facilities Committee is looking at and referencing. Can we get those posted on the website, or have them available at the meetings, just 'cause it, it's hard to follow along with line items and seeing things? So that's to, that's to the Board and Larry over there. Could we just get those documents out there somehow?
Sure.
That's it. Thank you.
I just, I just had a question. Are we deciding, we allocating funds tonight at $20 million? Are we deciding we allocating funds tonight at twenty million, what goes where?
No.
Or how will that process work?
Yeah, I can, I can revisit. I've attempted to bring up the slide, but it clearly didn't do its job if it wasn't explanatory enough. So this is a year-long process, right? So imagine now, we are, we are at the intake phase, both of information through the facilities committee and community input through the communication committee. Just to put a target out there, the board will vote on what projects constitute the larger capital project, I would say somewhere, give or take, February first. Before then, it's a, it's a process of listening to the architect, as Nancy was describing, they're going, they're giving us, you know, revised reports as requested by the facilities committee, whittling down the projects to, the potential projects to what will actually be included. The community input plays a role in that, of course. The facilities committee, and Harvey, Terry, perhaps you have a better idea of like exactly when the facilities committee will make that recommendation? Would it be after the new year, or perhaps before the new year?
It needs to be right after the new year.
Okay. So that's the, that's the timeline we're looking at. This is, we're still very much in intake phase, and the decisions, even the decisions by the facility committee will not be final, then it will go to the full board, which will then, I'm sure, discuss even further. So I think January is really the month to keep, you know, something on your calendar where decisions will be made.
So as I can see, anti-athletic folks are already out. When should I waste my breath? What point to make my point?
Tonight.
I think you've got the mic in your hand, if we can, yeah, I think that was.
Okay. So a couple of things. Field, I've seen all sorts of drawings by these architects who I don't care about. One field is going this way, that is here. One field is going this way, somebody wants to take the road out. The cost of building the field right here is, will be the minimum. If you build, track is brand-new, field just needs to be done. I would bet that, at one time I had done research, it would be a third of the cost of building a field out there and a stadium out there. Economic point, we already killed the main street. Everybody talks about killing the main street by building the high school out there, okay? If we move the fields out there to, if we built the school out of town, another town, my hometown school is in another town. You know, forty years ago, when I moved here, this was my dream town. That's why I settled here. And this was like, all the kids were right here, all the sports were right here. I see eighty, ninety-year-old people coming to sporting events. Monroe, the day we had a Monroe game, there must have been three thousand people here. All those people bring financial benefits to the town. On the weekend, when the other young, youth sports play, they bring money to the town. So please consider that when you decide to build a stadium out there, because I, both my sons are out of school now, but we are, I'm a sports guy, athletic guy. So to me, it's very important. I still go to most of the sports I can, most of the events. I am totally against building a field out there. I don't even like that school. Out of town, you take my, this is small-town America, right here, this field, at this middle school, and Lee Road, and all this, this is what small-town America is. Don't take my field out there.
Thank you. If we're going to talk about the fields being either here at the high school, I think we need to think about the impact on the community, what high school sports, especially publicly-funded high school sports is about. It's about the sense of community. That's why we play sports. We don't play sports just co, you know, some super athlete has a place to showcase their skills for college. It's about building the community and the, and the feel that every student in the school district, not just the high school, feels a part of the athletic program. And it builds self-pride in the community and in their school district. And if you put it out at the high school, you're going to lose that. I'm the vice president of Cornwall U football. When you come to a varsity football game, at least sixty percent of the people in the, you know, are, don't have a kid playing on the field. They either have a kid in youth, or there are kids in youth, or they had kids in the program, they come to watch and support and feel part of the program. The high school is too far away. Not just that, there's not enough parking. I never forget my first parent-teacher day when my son was a freshman. My wife and I got delayed, we got there about ten minutes late. There wasn't one single parking spot at the high school, and that was parent-teacher night. It's not three thousand people for a football game. There's not enough parking there. Plus, there's only one way in, one way out. Don't kill the reason why we have these sports. Don't kill that sense of community. It's what it's all about. You know, I've never seen a varsity soccer game. You know why? Because it's at the high school. If it was here, I'd definitely be seeing it. I've seen plenty of Little League games where my son wasn't involved in. Why? Because it's in the middle of town. Everybody hangs out there. The sense of community, everybody cheers those kids on. Don't, don't lose that by putting it out in the high school. Don't, don't do it. Thank you.
Yeah, Hugh Libert. I just wanted to second that. I agree completely with what was just said. I think, you know, building the high school was a decision made before I got to town, but it seems to me like it was a poorly-made decision, and to the extent we can correct it by putting the fields back here if we have to build a field somewhere, I think they belong in town. I agree completely with that. My main question about the field, though, is not whether it's desirable, because I would love to have a really nice, beautiful field in town. My main question is about the prioritization of the spending. I think if Mr. Dade, you know, if we had heard that, like, we had fifteen million dollars of, like, absolute needs, and we had five million dollars left over, and we wanted to spend that on the nicest possible field, I would vote yes in a heartbeat, like, no problem, right? But if we have thirty-five million dollars of needs, the question is where to put the field on that prioritization list. And I'm undecided on that. I really don't know how to evaluate, like, where the field falls on that list, but that's my concern right now, is trying to figure out, like, where it falls. If it falls, you know, further down the list, I think it would probably make sense to do twenty million dollars of needs and then do the field later, but I'm still trying to figure that out, where it falls on the list.
Just before, I'm sorry, just before the next comment, I thought Brendan was going to chime in, just wanted to reiterate, that's, that's the true work of the facilities committee, so chime into those meetings. That's exactly what the next few meetings will be about, is we've gotten a lot of data and information. Now, the hard work is, here's how much money we have to spend. Where does a roof fall versus plumbing for a bathroom versus site work for a bus loop? Things of that nature are the hard decisions that needs to be made.
Hi, my name is Dave Cornwright. I'm on the facilities committee. I've been doing facilities for probably twenty years. I've seen a lot of bonds fail for various reasons. A lot of them were too expensive, a lot of them the public couldn't afford. I push for them because I want to see the best for the kids. I really don't have an opinion on a lot of things, but I have a lot of different hats that I wear. Tonight, I have my village trustee hat on. So tonight, I'm looking for the betterment of the community, the dollars in the community. That's what I'm looking for. I really believe that this project, the athletic portion of it, I think you should, it should be done sooner rather than later as far as figuring out whether you're going to separate or not. I don't think it's fair to, the board needs to make a decision on that. I sat on the board for nine years. The second thing is, I really believe that if you put a stadium-type complex at the high school, and very little or nothing's done at the middle school, I think we all lose, because the dollars are going out there, and you know what? I don't have an affinity for price chopper. I really don't. So that's my take on that. And listen, we have a school, we have to maintain it, but it is the newest school, and I realize for the coaches and for a lot of people involved, there's absolutely, makes sense for them to make their life easy, to have the athletes go out and walk right on the field. But I just have to look out for the community and the community dollars, and I think that we have a lot more need in this community with Main Street than having to worry about supporting New Windsor. The other part of it is, I think we need to keep the costs down, as Mr. Libert said. I think that's really important, that we keep the costs down. I certainly voted for infrastructure first, and a lot of times, the athletic people get a bad rap, and I can tell you, as been the president for a long time, and I've been involved for twenty-eight years on, on this board, and we are not here to make football number one, we're here to make sure that the infrastructure in these schools and the school neighborhood concept stays strong, and rehabbing these schools is the most important thing to me, and that's what I voted for, so, thank you.
One final point. Priority, we all agree, I have sons, you guys have kids, but we have children, all have children, and their safety comes first. Whatever the safety reasons are in school, they got to be corrected. Athletic fields have been sent down the road, couple of years down the road, five years down the road, for thirty years. Every time when it comes, it's the athletics that are cut first. Just keep that in mind. Our, our teams just won eight championships, our track does well, our tennis people do well. I mean, all over athletics is like, you know, brings a lot of name recognition and all that to our town. Thirty years of sending it down the road.
So I sit on the facilities committee, and I also sit on the communications committee, and I'm going to play a little bit of a devil's advocate here, and I hope that you will hear where I'm coming from. I agree that having the football field at the middle school brings a sense of community, zero doubt. However, what is being proposed in the cheaper option is going to put us in the same position we are at, at the high school. Everybody complained for years that the football field was too small, it wasn't done right, and we've heard that for years and years, and it's something that we've continued to have to say, that's not true. The field at the middle school, what's being proposed, is going to create a soccer field that is a little bit too narrow to have what other schools have. My concern is, is we're going to be right back where we are now in years down the road of somebody coming back and saying, it's not big enough. It also presents a safety issue on where corner kicks are taken. So that's, that's one thing. The cheaper option is just literally resurfacing the football field. That is it. So that three million dollars that's in that proposal does not take care of locker rooms, it does not take care of the concession stand, it does not take care of the bleachers. So it's parking, parking's not even addressed in that, so you're really not touching what that actual cost is going to be. So you have to take that into consideration when you're looking at that option. We have bleachers that are on the visitor's side that's going to get us sued, plain and simple. There are issues at that, at the football field for safety reasons, security reasons, when you have high school kids that are being bussed over from the high school every single day to the middle school, whether it be soccer, football, lacrosse, whatever sport it may be, that now you don't have locker rooms for these kids to be in. So now they are in the same building with middle school kids. That's a problem. It's a big issue. So we have to really take that into consideration when we're talking about where this field is going to be. Did, did they make a mistake by putting the high school out in New Windsor years ago? Possibly, but that's what we're dealt with. So we have to figure out a way that this is going to work to create a community sense and to keep our high school students together, because if you have it at the middle school, and I brought this up last night in the facilities meeting, your athletic trainer has to drive back and forth. If you have practice going on at the high school and there's a game going on, he has to go back and forth. There, that's, that's another issue. So then you have, on top of that, you have kids that need help after school. They need tutoring, they might need physical therapy. How do you get them over to the middle school for practice after that is all said and done? Because now all the other kids have already gotten here by bus. So you're bussing kids over from the high school, and I think these are the things that the community really needs to understand and really know, that when we are talking about where this field is going to be, whatever your decision may be, and it's okay to have a difference of an opinion, that's what we're here for. But at the end of the day, really put the numbers to the paper and the pros and cons, and really figure it out. Just because it's a tradition and this is where it's been, doesn't always make it the right choice. So we have to make sure that for our kids' safety, their security, and the fact that they have a decent field to play on, we have to make the right decision this time. It's imperative not to go back to doing that value engineering that we did at the high school, to come back for other people to say, in ten years, you screwed up again. That's not what I'm here for. So I really hope, whatever your decision is, if you have questions, come ask me. I sit in these meetings every other week, twice a week. I'm here. I'm happy to answer those questions.
Last name's too long, so I don't want to repeat it. Regarding if we do have this beautiful stadium out at the high school, you know, it's going to be for lacrosse, soccer, football, because what's going to happen with the soccer fields that are there now? Does anybody have a plan? Because I know a lot of times soccer can't play on their fields because they were managed wrong or led, you know, however, because there's drainage problems. But what's going to be done with that land there? Does anybody have an idea?
Are you talking about the land at the high school? So the, the current soccer fields?
Yeah, because, you know, current soccer fields, when it rains, it's, they're either coming to the middle school to practice or to play, or they're, they're going to Kirsty Babcock and playing there under the lights. So what's, what's that land going to be used for if we do have a new field stadium at the high school?
So the, the current proposal does not shift any of the baseball field, softball field, existing soccer fields? What Walter Moran and, and Harvey are looking at is how do we still continue to do improvements? We know drainage is an issue here at the middle school as well with the field condition, so I'm trying to figure out how to squeeze every dollar out of those improvements, but everything won't get taken care of all at once. There's no, there's not enough funding to, to do the improvements other places. But in- But in improvements, yes, but kind of the renovation, one of the topics that was under consideration early on, that's still not off the table, but is, in my opinion, a really far stretch, is another turf field in another location, so having two. You've heard us say countless times tonight that the needs just significantly outweigh the wants. I see that second turf as a, as a want. So it's, it's not gonna happen, in my opinion, for this go around. But long-term planning, what can we do to start to address some of those issues? That you're, you're right, spot on. The shot put area, another issue. There, there's some work to do that has, has taken place over time, but we need some different strategies to address those.
I have another question, too. Sorry. Everyone's saying, up at the high school, there's not enough parking, if we were to have the football games and everything. There's so much more parking there than there is here. And everyone's saying, there's only one way in, one way out. But there is another entrance/exit, if we're allowed to utilize it up on the top. Like, why aren't we allowed to utilize that? Where the kids, they, they park up on the hill. That is a potential entrance or exit. It's not? Okay, I wasn't sure, that's why I wanted to ask. Well, like Valley Central, they are right there on 17K. It's a state route. They have an entrance and an exit right there. I was just wondering.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to ask it.
Hi, my name's Reggie Hilaire. I just have a probably simple question. Is there a timeframe of any of these projects, when it will be done? And, again, another simple question. If you have to do, of course, the maintenance, manic, building, mechanical, how do you do that when all the kids are at school? Do you do it during summer? How, how do you do it? Without the kids being in danger of coming into contact with people working in these facilities as they're doing their job? So again, what's the timeframe of these projects, and how are you gonna do it?
That's a good question. So, the intent is to have the vote next May. With that said, once that is done, we hope to start the project by the next summer. And to your point, there's certain work that you can't do when the children are in school. The project itself as a whole would be phased, meaning what, what can we do right away, real quick, without even worrying about the kids necessarily being in the buildings? The other aspect comes into play is that oftentimes, you're able to have the work done on second shift, you know, essentially at night. So we're fully aware of that. Every school district deals with this issue. That's why you have to phase it, it's a lot of coordination, but, you know, you make the most of the situation.
I just have a follow-up, more of an opinion, as what Lynn hit it right on the, on the head with. Right now, my son is on the varsity team, they're practicing at the middle school, under the lights. It's kind of, especially after the accident after the Valley Central, it's now it's in the back of your mind, where these kids can get hurt, not just on school buses, but from traveling from the high school to the middle school, or any facility, or even to NEMA. As an experienced driver, I can't take it for granted, but there seems to be more and more accidents coming, 32, 94, whatever. So, going back to what Lynn said, if you keep it at a central location, yeah, you take away the fact of the homeschool, hometown, central location, but as a safety-wise, you wanna keep the kids where they are. At the high school, wherever it could be. If this comes down to a high school, that's a great idea, because I, my son traveled with other kids. And they're young, they're cocky, they're inexperienced. And as we get into the deer crossing, inexperienced drivers on every age front, I wanna minimize the risk. It's 11-minute drive, five miles, anything can happen, between traveling high school to middle school. It makes sense, but doesn't make sense to keep on traveling all around this small town. So that's just my opinion as a parent and as an experienced driver. Thank you.
I'd actually just like to add a couple of things, because I, I do want to be sure that when we have this discussion, we are, we do understand what one choice means over another, and some have been addressed. So, it's, it's become commonplace to say, the field at the middle school is cheaper. And, first of all, we don't have final numbers on that, so it's too early to say. Also, the field might be cheaper, but to Lynn's point, it would have to, in order to do that, it would have to be built within the current track, which would mean the soccer field would be more narrow than the soccer field at the high school. So that's a trade-off that has to be considered. It would also, doing it at the middle school requires additional assets to be built. We'd have to build more parking. The, the parking situation is such that it, it is, in my view, not responsible to spend this much money on something and not address what is frankly, an ad hoc, unsafe parking situation. We have people, we don't really have a parking lot. We, people just park wherever. And that's not ideal. So, is there not enough parking at the high school? Okay, but there's certainly, if that's, if that's the valid point, then there's certainly not enough parking at the middle school. So that's another, another cost. And then there's the locker rooms, which bleeds into another residual effect of having the, the field at the middle school. So currently, the high school football team plays at the middle school. If we do the project at the middle school, it becomes a multi-sport facility. Now you have the soccer, the football teams, lacrosse teams, soccer teams. Instead of it just being one season, now you have every day, all year, all school year, all of these other athletes being bussed over to the middle school. Those kids need a place to go. Keep in mind the schedule. The high school gets out earlier than the middle school. Those high school student athletes, some of them seniors, you know, in, in some cases, grown men, almost, are, will be sharing space with 10-year-olds who are in 5th grade in the middle school. It's not, not a sustainable option. We need to be able to build them locker rooms so that they have that space. That's another expense. And also, you would have the, the traffic issue. By having all of these sports going to the middle school, they all are, are coming to essentially this campus, let's call it. The middle school is still in operation. Lee Road Elementary is still in operation. I have my two little ones here at Lee Road. After school, they like to play on the playground out there. Assuming we have parking built, you know, to support the middle school field, high school field at the middle school, that would cut into some of that space. But then to Lynn's safety point, you would now have a lot of people occupying space where you're sharing space now with 5-year-olds running around a playground 20 feet away. I don't know how many parents are comfortable, I mean, security at, with any little kid, any, you know, school with small children is always at a premium. You don't want to have people unaccounted for walking around mingling with 5, 6-year-olds. That is, that's, but that would be the reality. I'm not saying that that's nail in the coffin, right? But when we have this discussion, we need to be honest about what the residual effects of all of this are. It's easy to say, the field's cheaper, but that's not taking into account the other costs that we would need to accrue. And we can't ignore the fact that it would complicate, logistically and potentially safety-wise, what goes on here at Lee Road and at the middle school.
How you doing? My name is Jim Mealy. I have a question and a comment. First off, I don't envy you guys, because I know, you know, whatever decisions are made, you're not gonna please everyone, like you said in the, in the beginning. My question is, you proposed a field at the high school and a field at the middle school. Will you guys decide on that? Or does that, is that open to, is that open for us to decide on? Or, like, I guess my point is, when the budget's presented in May, will one of those be on there, or do we get the vote on, on which one?
So, it will be decided ahead of the vote. That decision needs to be made even before it goes to the board for approval. This is new information from me, and it's really based on our architects and our construction manager. There's a lot of what-ifs. So if the field is at the middle school, there's certain projects and costs that come in, into place with that, when you're phasing particular work and, and things of that nature. If the field goes at the high school, same kind of what-ifs. So the pricing cannot be completed for the committees to make an informed decision without deciding ahead of time of whether it's gonna be at the middle school or the high school. Great question. I asked the same thing of, when do we need to make that decision and why? And that, that's what the, the honest answer is, is even on the sheets that Mr. Heinz was talking about, there's some spots that say, dependent upon field location, where there's no price included, because it's wrapped up into other, other components.
Okay. And then I guess my comment is, either way, I have, I have a child that's on the varsity team, I have a child on the JV team, I have a 3rd grader coming up, so I'm fully invested in this. In my opinion, I've been here for a while, we certainly need one or the other. Whether it's gonna be at the high school, whether it's gonna be at the middle school, you know, that's up to, I guess, you guys to decide, but, you know, we need, we, you know, and I'm gonna be, you know, a little, you know, biased here, but we have arguably the best high school football program in the state. No question. Especially over the last 5, 6 years. On the flip side, we have arguably, probably some of the worst facilities when it comes to this field here. Like, when other teams come here, I'm a teacher in another school district. When I tell my colleagues and coaches over there that I, that I'm, that I'm with, you know, when I show them pictures over here, they can't believe it. Can't believe how good of a program we have, yet the facilities that we're playing on are, I don't want to say horrendous, but they're rough. All right, they're rough. I've coached youth football here, we play in the same facilities, they're just tough. It's, you know, we've had, we've had injuries out here because of the field itself. You know, I mean, I, I hope we're not waiting for something, you know, catastrophic to happen. So something definitely needs to be done, and hopefully it's gonna get pushed through here. And then the last thing I would say is, the youth sports, you know, our youth football program, I'll just talk, you know, mostly about. We use these facilities here for practice, we use these facilities here for games on Sunday and all that. Has that been thrown into the pot when you're thinking about where you're gonna put these fields? Will that be open to them?
Yeah, so it's interesting you, you bring that up, because we, we did discuss that last night, and, you know, there's, we're, we're just trying to project out, you know, so it's not, a, a bit of it is just conjecture. But if there is a multi-use field at the middle school, that's gonna be used all the time, right? Because now, it's turf, there's no concerns about wearing it down, it's open to a lot more high school fields. Your, your high school athletic program will exist on that field. So that would actually diminish its availability for other town use. So, I mean, just logically, all right? So, although it, it might seem like, well, building the better facility in town is gonna be better for town athletics, the opposite might turn out to be true, because that would actually free up all of those fields for all the things that you just described.
Right here, sorry. I actually was gonna touch on that before you said that, because Dave and Tom and Howard and you guys, Coach Reggie, you know, you all know how much football means to me. It goes way back. So, this is a big deal, and the one question I have for the youth football, you have very important people sitting right here, that's a part of Cornwall Youth Football, and that's what feeds into our football program. You wanna know why we have a great football program? Because it starts with the little ones. Right? So, the one thing you have to ask yourself is if that field is built right here, are you willing to give up that space? And where are you gonna go to practice? Because now, you have to find a new spot. It's, you're, you're, you're going to, you're, how are you gonna practice on a field when it's being occupied by... I just drove in and saw all the youth... But that's, but that's a misconception, I guess, with the community. That's why I'm bringing up these honest questions and these honest points, is because, because of that, because of that reason. So now, you have a field here, a turf field, right? And you have varsity sports, probably some of the JV sports are gonna come over, of, of all aspects. You're gonna be on the side, practicing over on the side, and you're having little ones intermingled, again, male or female, it's a safety concern when you have that many people that are in one spot, and we don't even have parking. It's gonna take up even more parking. So those are the honest questions you really need to ask yourself. The other thing that it presents, if you move the field to the high school, and this is something I brought up last night, is you now have a second field with lights that is available to modified sports, which is also in dire needs. So when we're talking about multi-sports facilities, we have to really touch every sport and realize it's about more than just our football program, more than just soccer, more than just lacrosse. It is from the little ones all the way up to high school. So we really have to be honest with ourselves and ask ourselves how it's going to affect those programs before, and, and I know, I know that you guys want it right here, and I feel ya, I do. It's a hard decision, but you need to ask like those very honest questions before you make that decision.
Well, I, I can answer a lot of those questions. First I wanted to get back to, was trying to ask before, was, I've been watching the facility meetings, and I saw the overlay last night of the middle school field. And as far as the soccer field, there was no proposal of redoing that track like there was at the high school, and putting in a regulation-sized soccer field here. The previous two bond issues, there, there was, that was the plan, to put in a regular-sized soccer field and pair up the track and put the track in.
So, and this goes back to just making sure that we start getting more up on our website. There were two options presented for the middle school. One was within the existing footprint of the field, and the existing track, and the other was to widen it and to do a, a, a larger track as well.
But that was the reorientation.
Correct.
Why, why can't you keep the same orientation and just widen the field? Yeah, there's no option for that. I know the last, and I was very involved in the last two bonds, and I pushed for them. But both of those bonds, there was proposal was to put in a regulation-sized soccer, the same proposal at the high school, but here, at the middle school.
So what was presented at facilities was to look at, the different orientation could still be overlaid at the same orientation. That, that cost is going to be the same. Then you're, then you're digging into the existing track, you have to demo it.
Okay.
So the cost would really be reflective of the altered orientation that, that was presented last night.
Well, my, my issue with the, the change in orientation was, there was a lot of wasted space to the left. What was the plan for that space going to be? And it would also push into the modified baseball field, and push that into where our current, where the practice football field is that we use right now. So, I don't understand the purpose of the reorientation, why it's so necessary, when you could keep the same orientation, just a wider field.
Yeah, I, I just know, we asked as a committee for options, and that was an option presented. There's pros and cons for...
Well, I know you're not the architect, but it was just something, that's something that was left out, that's something that made me need to address, because the last two previous bonds that failed was the same orientation, just a wider field. And I don't know why that wasn't optioned and being considered. As far as youth, you know, I, I'm trying to understand the, the whole, the whole argument about the safety, because, because currently, right now, modified lacrosse uses a practice field in the spring, and I believe JV does, which is fine. So that, they're here anyway in the spring, being, coming back to play their games here. I know modified soccer uses the soccer field on the side of the middle school. And I know that JV, I mean, unless I'm wrong, I know JV plays there once in a while, too. So there's already teams playing here. So if you had the sports complex here, the only additional teams I could see coming here, I mean, obviously freshman football and JV football, too, also play here. The only additional teams would be the varsity soccer team and the varsity lacrosse team, and the track team. And that's it. I know, I mean, that's the only additional people. There's track meets going on, modified track meets going on constantly. There's track meets going on, modified track meets going on constantly that we work around. We're used to dealing with a lot of people, that's not really an issue for us. We've dealt with this before, I mean, it's not really something that we worry about, we well supervise our kids, so I don't think that's really a safety issue for us.
I'm sorry, I thought you were...
Did you want to say something?
No, I think the, when, the image that I'm thinking of is not kids within the district coming and practicing, you know, sparsely populated practices, it's games, it's having games there with teams from other districts, and just an influx of people in what is essentially, you know, already a shared campus between Lee Road and the middle school, and now, so now you're going to have, you're going to have, what, five schools within the school district, and all of the high school events, basically everything is just happening here, right?
Well, there's things happening here already, is what my point is trying to make...
But it will accelerate, I mean...
Honestly, no, we already have the JV and freshman games going on as well, we're practicing. We already have modified soccer, and whatever is going on at the soccer field while we're practicing, and we really have a problem with that. So we've never had that problem, it would only be varsity and, you know, lacrosse, which is in the spring, so that's not going to affect us, and it would just be soccer, varsity soccer games. That would really be the only additional contact that we would have during the week.
When it was first explained to us at the facilities committee, I think the numbers were going from eight games to 64. So that's significant, I, look, I trust what you're saying, but the information that I was given by the athletic director was that it would be by magnitudes of several multiples increasing, so it's not just, you know, and this is all year.
No, and again, that would be over the course of the year, so you've got to spread that out, there might not be as many people there at different times of the year. So it sounds like a lot, but when you spread it over the course of the year, it may not be a lot.
We may want to yield on this point, so I think your opinion has been made, that, you know, that's the opinion, that we can handle the increased volume and things of that nature, but I just want to make sure that we're getting around to everyone.
Hi, Howard Lane. We approved this bond, capital improvement money, a couple of years ago, and now you're saying we have $20 million. Is that every three years are we going to have that $20 million saved?
No, and we don't have 20 million saved.
Five.
What we're saying is, because the state will pick up 75 cents on the dollar, that 5 million is the remaining 25 percent that typically would fall on the local share, okay? So to say that we would have that every three or four years, first of all, this reserve has to be approved by the taxpayers, which it was in 2018. In order for us to start saving again, we have to have the taxpayers approve the ability for us to start another capital reserve. You spend it down, you can't fill it back up, that one's onto itself. So to your point, we would need another capital reserve, and we would need to have the surplus that occurs each year be enough to put funds into it.
Good evening, I'm Kate Palumbo, I'm the principal at the middle school. So I have a couple of points that I just want to make really quickly. First of all, I think when we talk about a facility, I think we have to be really careful that we don't use the word stadium, because we're not building giant stadium in the back of either one of our school buildings. So the facility that we're talking about building at either the high school or the middle school will increase traffic to the middle school from high school kids from 2:30 in the afternoon until 8:30 or 9 o'clock at night, regardless of what season it is, because every coach is going to want to have their kids on that turf field every day. Not only because they're preparing to play on turf fields outside of our district, but also because when it rains, their fields get muddy, or they want to prevent injury, or they're trying to get their kids ready to different surfaces, that's just what happens. I did athletics in a very large school district for five years, and as soon as we started to talk about turf, they would have, coaches would have sold their firstborn children to get 10 minutes on a turf field. The second thing is, I can tell you that whenever there is a game where kids are dropped off at our school, they're dropped off in the middle of ninth period, and they hang out in front of the building, and there are, whether it's football that has, you know, 30 kids out there standing as young fifth and sixth and seventh graders are walking out to the bus, or it's lacrosse in the spring, they're then brought into our school building, and we have to kind of corral them for a while until they can get out to the field where they have to practice. It is a long way to go from our building out to that field. So you have kids going back and forth. I'm totally comfortable with the kids that we have that go to our school district, we have good kids, they do the right thing, but I can't be held responsible for the kids that come in from other places, or if one of our kids decides to make a decision that's not in the best interest of themselves or their future. I think we just need to kind of eliminate those kinds of possibilities. My daughter plays varsity sports, and her favorite thing to do is to leave her practice and go see her buddy who plays soccer, or go over to see somebody who plays basketball, or go to the football game, whether it's modified or freshman. It's the best part of her day. She gets mad if we pick her up on time, because she wants to go see one of her friends. And I think we have such tremendous sports programs, and we have such good kids, that we really need to make that opportunity available, that you can come out of drama and go to watch a football game, or a soccer game, or a softball game. And the last point I'm going to make is, I have worked in school districts that have three times the population and have a single mean of egress in and out of a building, no extra, onto state roads, and it is manageable. It's not ideal, but it is manageable. You get in touch with the town or the police, they help you on your in and out, they know that it's Friday night, I would bet money, my next paycheck, that everybody on Mailer Avenue hates Friday nights, because there is so much traffic going in and out of their house. So I know it could be a safety issue, I know we could work with police, but if a school like Arlington can do it with 5,000 people, I think we can manage to figure it out, because we're a lot smarter, and we have a more, I think, a bigger sense of community than they do. And I don't just say that because I...
Thanks once again for the postcards. Any idea when we get the results from all those surveys that you mailed out, and when will it be online?
I would love to give you an exact date, so just to give you a little inside baseball, we initially wanted to make it such that it was like a Scantron, where you could just, like, feed it in, that wasn't possible, so all of these have to be tabbed by hand, and because of the mail, it's, they were trickled in to homes late, and they're therefore trickling back late, so it's all taking a little bit longer than we would have expected or hoped, and then the tabulation is going to take a bit, too. Not to say this is never going to come out, but I'm just, it's not going to be this Friday, you know? But once we have a better idea of that, I'll keep everybody posted through, you know, the Facebook page and things like that, so it's coming. Well, our initial date was last Friday to send them back in, you know, just... I mean, I would say, if they're not in by this Friday, it's probably too late, I'm not saying if it doesn't come in, if it comes in the next Monday, we're, you know, going to throw it in the trash, but there does have to, we just have to have a time, none of this is legal, right? This is just our own input, but just practically speaking, we, you know, we need to have a date that we can start just collecting them. So I would say, you know, if you haven't gotten it in yet, get it in, if it's easier, fill out the electronic version, so, and that'll make it easier to tabulate, too. So it was, yeah, it was sent out through School Messenger on Friday, but we can certainly send it out again. We wanted to, frankly, we wanted to avoid double dipping, you know, so it's...
Isn't it scanned bread?
The, no, the paper one isn't, no.
Oh, it's all got to be done by hand?
Yeah, yeah. Well, you can help, Dave, if you want, it seems like you volunteer.
I just want to make a couple quick points, for the record, mainly for the record, that everything that exists at the middle school now has cost nothing to the taxpayer. The lights were put up by youth football, the track was fundraised $500,000, the tower was put up by youth football, all the infrastructure, the shed was built in the '60s by the Boosters Club. So the school has $0 at the middle school right now, and Walter's done his best to maintain it, and I know it's tough to do. And I think one of the things that people need to remember, because I've seen it with my own eyes, is you could have the best grass field in the world there, and if people decide they're going to play on it on a rainy, drizzly night, you can lose it in one night. So you can have a $500,000 investment, and you can lose it in one night. I saw it happen in Monroe. Officials said they didn't want to play the game, they had put $250,000 into the field, and the coaches said, "We're going to play the game." They played the game, they destroyed the field in one night. So that's something to remember about turf versus grass. You could really destroy it. And we've been lucky this year, because we've had a lot of rain, so the field is actually probably better than it's been in a long time. Just a couple other points about the parking. The difference in a high school is that the parking is finite. There is no more parking at the high school. Walter may be able to steal some spots here and there, but you also have to remember, if you put the stadium in, you're going to take parking away from the existing teacher parking lot. I don't see how you could possibly avoid that, because it can only be standard on the school side. It can't be multi, it can't be standard on the other side, there's not enough room. So I think that's something to remember. And I think there's a difference between, when you talk, and I understand what the gentleman is saying about his kids driving back, and I get that, that it is dangerous, but the traffic pattern in town is a lot less dangerous than it is out by the high school, where it's 45, and one of the, really, one of the worst-recorded roads in Orange County, Route 94. So I drive it every day, I drive a bus every day, and it's a nightmare every day, morning and night. So you're going to be coming to a game at 5:30, 6 o'clock for a 7 o'clock game through Five Corners, which is the route that the school suggested when the school was built, and it's not a good traffic pattern.
I just, I feel like it has to be said, I know it was said last night, but we have a lot of people that live out by the high school. There's a, I, this isn't, that's not undeveloped land anymore, and while it, I wasn't here, I'm glad I wasn't here, to be part of that discussion about when that middle school became the middle school and the high school became the high school, but some of the points that are being made are very valid, but we're going to ask people then to go from out there all the way in here, when it could just be right next door. So I think we just have to acknowledge that there is a lot of our district population that does not live in the town of Cornwall, and does not have the ability to walk, and still has to drive through it every day.
Caitlin Milott, that was going to be my question. I grew up in Woodbury, went to Cornwall, we're now in Salisbury Mills, my daughter's in second grade, I have a four-year-old as well. Is there a sense of, like, how many people actually live within Cornwall COH, as opposed to now Woodbury, Salisbury Mills, you have Meadowbrook Estates, you know, the Reserve, like, how much of the district is within walking distance to the fields as of right now? Or, you know, within town, so to speak?
I don't know the answer to that about walking distance, but I can tell you, in terms of taxpayers, 75% live in Cornwall or the village of Cornwall. The rest is New Windsor and Woodbury.
So one of the points that I made at an earlier meeting, that I just want to make sure that anyone watching and our folks here, there is a decision that needs to be made about athletic facility, and I just need to remind everyone that if you look at the building condition survey, if you look at the items that the facilities committee is deliberating over, there are exceptional needs within each and every one of our buildings that must be addressed. So the amount of time that we've spent these past few meetings talking about athletics, we really are going to start taking a deep dive into, if we fix the roof at X building, it costs this much. Is a roof a number-one priority in the district? Yes or no? I'm not going to answer that tonight. Is plumbing in a particular building a priority one, priority two, priority three? That's something that the committee will have to answer. So while we're spending a good amount of time of healthy dialogue on athletics, we're really going to be starting to, you know, make a decision there, knowing that we still have a lot of work to do with regards to addressing what are the true needs in the district? What do we do now versus later is just something that I just have to keep bringing back to the fore, because there's things that Mr. Hines brought up, of things that are making our buildings unsatisfactory right now, that we have to address with the state to get them up to where they need to be. So that's just something that we have to keep in mind, as we're making these important decisions, as voters, as taxpayers, as community members, I'm a father in the district as well, so I can't help but enter these conversations with my school CES in mind, and then my superintendent hat of all of our district in mind as well. So just something to keep in mind as we enter these next few fun months.
Hi, my name is Jim Cragan. For those of you who don't know me, I'm on the Board of Education and on the Facilities Committee, so I've been sitting in all those meetings. So I just wanted to make a couple points, Terry kind of stole some of my thunder, because I was going to level set a little bit, but he said earlier, you know, we'd love to have two fields, we might not have the money for one. As he said, the needs are well north of $30 million, we have $20 million to spend, we can all do the math, and though that's not enough. So I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, being involved in this process, and I will speak for the entire board, say, you know, we all welcome community input. If you have a question, if you know a board member, please ask us. If we can't answer your question, we will direct you to where, you know, to who can answer that question. We desperately want the community to be involved in this process. Brendan said earlier, not everybody's going to get everything they want, you're going to be happy with some things and disappointed with some things, I'm going to be in that same boat as well. So we desperately, you know, want you to come and talk to us, ask us any questions you have. I just want to make clear that no decisions have been made, this is all very preliminary, but the timeline is coming up, where decisions do need to be made in the January timeframe. I think the building plans need to be submitted to the State Education Department, correct? For approval?
At some point, at a certain point.
Okay, not before the bond, though?
Well, the earliest, the reason why we talked earlier about the January deadline in terms of the board identifying, there are certain deadlines and certain submittals for permits and so forth that we have to abide by with the state.
Right. And just a couple more points about, you know, the needs at these buildings, I just want to point out, I mean, Hornell and Hudson is 100 years old, this building is 50 some odd years old, Willow Avenue is pushing 100 years old, so really, the high school is the only new building. All of these buildings are very old, all of these issues are end-of-life issues, major issues, things that we need to deal with as a community. And one final thing that Brendan touched on briefly in the beginning, is, in all of my discussions with Terry and Harvey and the other board members, is we're all committed to make this a long-term plan. I was a community member the time that the last bond passed, and I think there was a feeling in the community that there was no long-term plan, and how did all these needs come up with us? The response was to pass the capital bond, so we're, you know, luckily where we're at now, we do have needs that exceed the available amount of money, but at least we have money to spend without raising taxes. So it's certainly in my mind, and I think in the mind of all the other board members, that we want to chart a path moving forward, where we're continuing to say, okay, if there's 15 or 20 million dollars worth of needs that we can't meet with this bond, we want to have a path for how we can meet those in the next decade, for the long-term, you know, health of our students and staff.
Hi, Dave Foer, teacher and Cornwall resident for, teacher 34 years. I just had a question, it might have come up, I, I couldn't get here right at the beginning. Has there any, has there been any thought into going above the free 20 million and asking the taxpayers to fund 25 million? And instead of pigeonholing into a number, getting what we really can now and saying 20, I'm just picking 25, 20 of the 25 is theoretically paid for, we're going to ask an entire community to pay for another 5 million? Just wondering if that's been thought about at all? I mean, we can ask peop, you know, you get what you pay for. And I know it's great to say it's not going to raise your taxes, but thinking about the next bond, we know how bonds go. It's really hard to pass bonds, so...
Right.
If you were 3 million short of really doing that extra level, or 2 million short, how much is 2 million going to add to an entire community? Or 3 million? Don't, I'm just saying, don't just get stuck on a number, because that's what you can guarantee won't raise the taxes a penny. I think some people wouldn't mind paying a little more to get something that serves a lot of people.
And I'm just going to speak for kind of the strategy of my team when we presented to the board, was one of the concerns that we heard from community members over the past few years was taxes are a concern. So when we think of trying to correct what happened over the past two failed votes, we felt that that was a significant, significant, significant strategy, was to say, you voted for this capital reserve, we listened. We not only listened, we completely maxed out the capital reserve, and this is the return that we can get from it. Our hope to, to Jim's point is, we're trying not to think of, let's get this passed and then we're going to wait another 10 years. It is, what is our path forward with getting this passed and then get some traction on what can we do next? Because unfortunately, the, the needs of the district aren't just shy of where the 20 million are. Unfortunately, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of needs. We have some significant work, that's why some of the bonds in the past were the level that they were. Again, I'm just speaking from our team when we presented to the board, that was our strategy, was the taxpayer has, has spoken loud and clear. We need for this go-around to keep it as, as we're not touching your school tax with what we are proposing with this capital project. That was just our strategy when presenting to the board.
Does anybody else going once? Going twice? All right, well, I, I think that brings the, the event to a close. Again, I think I speak for everybody. Thank you for, for coming out. I think this has, has been very helpful. Hopefully, everyone at home has been able to follow along. We'll, we'll post the videos on our various pages, websites, and we'll be in touch for the next forum, which should be sometime in December. Thank you.